Hi everyone, Randy Boeck here. I am with Wayne Jackson. He is a candidate for the open seat for city council. Wayne Jackson, thank you very much for being a part of this. I'm excited to have you here. Tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
Okay Randy, look here, first of all, I appreciate you putting this thing together, you know. Anytime we can get the information out of all our candidates, that's a good thing. But anyway, you know, I have a lot of people asking me, you know, why you're running, you know, for this thing. I feel like my, my simple answer is, you know, I've, you know, I've owned and operated businesses in this area. And my family, you know, I have, uh, you know, I have two children that are raised here. You know, I got one, you know, is a school teacher for 17 years, one that's in the mortgage business. So I had, I just felt like I had an interest there in, in, um, getting myself involved in the political end. I've been in so many businesses involved in so many nonprofit organizations all my life. I never thought that I'd use that platform, but I, I realize now that we need experienced people on our city council. You know, I, I look at our council and for years, only thing I've seen is the lack of experience to help them make decisions and make them a stronger person.
Wayne, why do you think you would be a good candidate for the job with your, with your work experience? And so what, tell us a little bit about why you think you'll be a good fit for the job.
Making this decision, I thought the same thing. You know, what can I, you know, bring to the, the council that they're missing? And one of the things that I believe that the council is missing is lack of an experience of dealing with people and dealing with problems, you know. In, in my life, uh, you, you wake up and you're in three, three categories. You're fixing to go into a problem, you in a problem, or you coming out of the problem. So a business person is always thinking, and when he wakes up in the morning, about a second cup of coffee, he has issues to deal with. You know, and I, I think some of the things I have dealt with in the business, not only in the business, but serving and listening to people as I've served in, in different capacities and groups, and, and listening to them and reading people. But I think the council, uh, I think Russ Carpenter is great. I think the council, Tara, I think she's a, a great person. But I think somebody on my council needs to have a little bit more experience, has been out there, you know, that has, uh, has, has developed something here in Richmond Hill and how the thought process had happened and the reason why I have, you know, developed and built in Richmond Hill, so they would understand. And I think the, another thing is, you know, I'm the kind of person, I like to get out. You know, I, I like to get out and talk to people and, and listen to their concerns. And, uh, I just think that my experience again, what I have been through all my life, because I have been here for 35 years, you know, here in the city.
Wayne, there, there's a big issue with the county fire services and the city fire services being combined. There's talk of that now, and I know some of the city firefighters are really against that idea. Their, their rating in the city is a little higher than the rating inside the, the county. They're worried about that. Also, they're worried about their identity a little bit. They're really involved in the community at some of these events, the city fire department. They're, they're very well-run, great organization, uh, great people involved there. What's your thoughts about consolidation? Do you think that's something we need and it will work?
The only way I can answer that fair is to actually look into how each, you know, the county and the city, how they operate on the services, which you always need to look at. First thing is, you know, when you consolidating, uh, things need to happen. I mean, it's supposed to be the benefit of our citizens for, for safety and for taxes. You know, when you make a decision like that, you, you don't want it to cost the citizens for us making a, a decision like that. And there's things that both departments can learn from each other, you know, for overlapping. We need to know how much overlapping is. You know, what, what, just for one thing, uh, the city don't have an ambulance. We don't have an EMS, you know, in our city. You know, nobody's thought about that. I mean, we, we, we need an ambulance in our city. You know, uh, if you bring them from the outside the county, you might have traffic problems, the train, you know. And that's another issue, the training, that I have some ideas that will make it a lot safer for our citizens, for our ambulances in the fire department and everything, to maneuver.
Let's talk about the train situation. I know that every day the train stops. I think somebody told me at one time, there's 24 trains a day that go by there. I'm not sure if that number's right or not. What's your ideas on, on the train tracks and the delays that we have every day?
Well, I've, I've done some research on small town that has similar issues that we have. And we had a couple of ideas I thought was great. You know, uh, our ambulances and, and our fire, firemen's and, and emergency vehicles, the police, they have a system that the police department and the ambulance and the fire department knows every hour. They know when that train is going to block that traffic. So when they get an emergency call, they know to reroute, go back the other way. You know, so the traffic and that train won't interfere with them getting people in and out, going through our city. And, uh, I mean, it's, it's really cool, the, the way they're looking at it. And I think we need something like that.
Wayne, you're going to be, uh, up for a seat for, um, open or held open now because of the late Johnny Murphy. And I know you guys were personal friends.
Right.
Uh, he had a great legacy of caring about this city and keeping this city on, on a growth path. What's your thoughts on his legacy and what would you do to add to that seat if you got that position?
Well, first thing, you know, people come in and build in our area. You know, he's still a good example. You know, and I want to talk about branding. You know, our city is, is, has a brand, the best place to come live and raise your children, go to school. But back in the day, you know, Johnny always kept that in mind. Uh, you know, we cannot lose the brand that we have had and we worked on for 50 years. That's why the builders are building here is because of the brand that the people and other people has done. We have, we have controlled that to, uh, you know. Savannah has a brand of tourism, you know, college, things is cooler and cooler. You know, Ludwissy, go Ludwissy, speed through that town, you get a ticket. Highsfield, military, they build from military bands. Richmond Hills brand is, is, it's always been a great place to live and raise your children and the school system. We have managed to keep that school system in line and, and the, and the people before man has done a great job. And we need to kind of remind the new people coming in about our brand.
Tara Broniak, Jan Bass, Mayor Russ Carpenter are very involved on, in special events around the town. Uh, I see them at seafood festivals. Russ Carpenter was at the front of the Dr. Martin Luther King Day Parade. Tara Broniak was just at the senior citizen the other day. She's very involved. If you get that position and you are a city councilman for the city of Richmond Hill, could you commit to being as involved as they are in some of these city events?
Oh yes, I, I mean, my track record proves that for what I have been, uh, you know, involved in, sitting nonprofit organizations up, special needs, I've done all that. I'm not, uh, you know, going to sit a record of attendance, okay? A, a new business up in Richmond Hill, I will personally call them, ask them anything they need. You know, Tara, you know, I heard she's going to challenge me into a relay race. I am not racing her, you know what I'm saying? Letting her take care of that. Russ Carpenter is a great speaker, carries himself well. I kind of like being in the trenches. I like to be in there with the people, uh, sort of showing up. I want to be there working. That's what I've always done. You know, that's the kind of a person I am. I'm, uh, we have peoples on the city council that can show up to every event they want to. But when I show up, I gotta, I gotta have a motivation behind it. You know, do they need me? Can I help them? Can we make things better? You know, that's, that's what I'm doing. Don't worry about as much as me attending an event, you know, or having a ribbon cut. Now, this ribbon cutting is afforded to me because the people invested in our town. And I want to definitely show them support. I personally talk to them, you know, not, not, I mean, that's just the kind of person I am, you know. I'm, I'm a servant.
Let me ask you a question about the city. Uh, last year annexed a large tract of land, over 2,000 acres on the other side of the county. Uh, almost doubling the size of the city. It's, uh, some people were for it and some people were against it. What's your thoughts on that? And you think, is that something you think you would have supported if you were on city council at the time?
Well, the way, way citizens and way people are, first of all, I would probably have said no. I vote no. You know, if I had to, you know, vote with no information. But majority of the time, people making their minds up and citizens, it's no, it's no. So it's up to us and the people seize the growth and we have information. If they don't have, it's up to us to sit down with them and explain to them why we need that need. Now, it, the, the buy-in of property, you know, I have to know, you know, how does it going to affect our, you know, our, our citizens? How does it going to affect our police department? Uh, what's the plans for all that growth? And if you're going to convince me that it's good for our citizens and our town, and it's going to be better, and then we're not going to be tax burdened with all that new development, there was a plan for that, I'll, I'll vote for it. But you know, it has to, uh, I believe it's just naturally for people. I had find, I found out that, you know, if you just ask them that question, what you just asked me, majority of the time, uh, they say no. You know, why they say no, because they're not, nobody's told them the whole story. You know, but once they told the whole story and they understand it, you'll have more people coming aboard and agreeing, because you need everybody to agree. You know, having, having division and people, I mean, you got half saying yes, half saying no. Uh, there's something wrong there about getting everybody in line. I mean, it's all about information, man.
So, um, this city has some of the most dedicated, dynamic city employees that I've seen in almost anywhere. From the guy who cuts the grass to up to Chris's job, Chris Levels' job as a city manager, and everyone in between. They're dedicated people. They're on the front line. They're basically, um, they're in the trenches every day. And you said that a second ago, and you, one of your answers about being in the trenches. They're in the trenches every day. Have you reached out to any of them about, hey, what does the city really need? And what are some of the issues that they see that we can get in front of to make the city even better?
Yes, I, I've been around long enough to pretty well talk to several administrations that's been in and out and down to, to Harvey who takes care of the park, you know. And when I meet Harvey at the park, one of the questions, how's things going, man? Everything okay? Everything's great, you know. You, you, the only way you're going to know if you're having issues is having the, uh, the, the skills to approach people and talk to them about them and just walk off and keep them filed away, you know, and try to fix that problem. Uh, everybody in the city, it, it seems like that all our leaders, uh, you know, Mike Milton was one of the tough, toughest city managers I've ever had to deal with. But Mike would, you know, communicate, if you can communicate with him, you can communicate with anybody. You know, he was strictly, I mean, hammered, hammered down for Richmond Hill. And, uh, I have went through the, the, uh, I probably 10 or 15 years ago with the impact fees. I went through that with the mayor, Richard Davis. Look here, I, I was a builder at the time. And let me tell you something, I took all the impact fees because I was smart enough to know that if I didn't and I fought that, that our local citizens was going to have to bear the tax burden. I was benefiting out of it, you know, I was making money. So guess what? If I don't make as much, that's fine too, you know. But once I sit, uh, the mayor down and explain to him elementary, that how a builder starts off, well, for, for a tract of property, put five townhouses on, it needed $25,000 upfront. I didn't have $25,000 upfront for an impact fee on every unit that I would build. So I explained to him, look here, I'm, I'm in on the impact fees. But we got to figure a way to help me pay it. I can't give you upfront before the, well, the slab is even poured. But what we can do is when we have a closing, take it out at the closing. I mean, I could get half of it, but you know, take it out at closing. And I mean, and there's, yeah, I feel, I had no problem with that.
Wayne, why should we hire you and put you in that position? What can you do for us and what are some of your visions for the city?
I think that it goes, it goes back to the, the experience and, and not only the, the, the experience of accomplishing things and putting things together. But one of the things that is strong, everybody knows this, and that is failures I have had. I mean, we learn and get educated by our failures. And I had my share of them, you know. When, uh, when, while I was putting jumping jacks together, we'd go visit different fund centers all the way down the east coast. I let our staff talk about what things they would be doing here and there. But what happens, I'd wait till everybody was through asking their questions. And my last question is, why leave? And this will be most of any event I would attend for the city, uh, is what would you, if you had a chance, what would you not do again? Okay? We have, uh, the city has a, a, these conventions they go to in Atlanta. And everybody gets together, they talk about successes, and they talk about things that they do and things you could do for the city. But one of the most important questions in all our city councils should be doing this is you listen and then at the end, you ask them, what would you, if you had to do it all over again, what would you not do? Because I'm the kind of person, I don't want our, our council, I don't want our city to have to repeat things that we had, we had our hands on the information, but we just didn't ask the right question. You know, so questions need to be asked and, and, and gathering information up and always asking, you know, what, what would you do if you talked to a city council, another city council person at these functions? You're talking about things and you say, well, let me ask you something. What, if you had to do it over again, what would you not do? And I'm telling you, that is like, you know, that's, that's money. That's what that is, that's money. It's to keep us from making mistakes, you know. I think experience, bringing some of the failures that I went through, that I had learned lessons from, uh, I mean, that's what I think I'm bringing to the table. That's what I want to bring, I mean, so, uh, that's my answer.
Wayne, tell us a little bit about what your plan is and what have you laid out that you're going to implement with the city?
Well, I had a, I don't know, uh, I put out, I looked at the, the, I reckon the way that I laid, uh, laid everything out is that there's four main priorities I look at in the city. And that's the public safety, that's infrastructure, that's the delivery of necessary services and promoting an environment that attracts and supports local businesses, okay? Uh, in the five years, this is what I would like to do, you know, to see in our city and some of the things that I would, uh, work on. You know, is review current traffic issues and stay ahead of the, the traffic plans. I mean, we have, we always have an issue with the traffic, but we need to stay on top of that more, you know. And, uh, public safety. You know, I think we need to be working with the chief on issues. You know, I think that the, uh, I think our development and our builders, I think it's very important that we, we have at least three or four meetings a year with the police chief of telling him about how many houses we bringing in and everything else, so he can plan his, his, uh, his safety plan for our city. If we don't start getting this information to the leaders, they're not going to be able to do a good job. They're always going to be the last minute thing. So developing neighborhood associations. I, I do believe that like Pierceville, Sterling Creek, where they don't have a, a home building association. I was, did, built lower income housing in Savannah. And the Savannah Building Authority sat me down and said, before you start building, I was on Staley Avenue, and Richard Barr and myself were partners. And we were trying to create a, a, a infrastructure for, you know, uh, housing there. So we seen a niche, they might need some help. So I'm going to sit down and told that when you start this neighborhood, these neighborhoods have three, uh, neighborhood leaders, you know, they're usually pastors. And they need to know what I'm doing and what's going on. They would share that with the neighbors and they'd have every 30 days, have a little cookout. You know, a neighborhood association, there's no fees. It's voluntary. It, it gives the neighbors information on what's going on. I think that's important. And then more, more, we need to be looking at uses definitely for Sterling Creek Park. I mean, you know, that, that, that's a big chunk of land sitting out there. And we need to take advantage of more functions or whatever. I, I'm not familiar, uh, what is set up and plans are on that park. But we need a 10 to 15 year plan. But back, we need, we need a city EMS service in place ASAP. I mean, you know, we don't have an ambulance in our city. And, you know, we need to start thinking about more of our safety and getting to our citizens, because we're growing. I mean, these issues come, come up a lot with growth. 10 to 15 year water service plan and reviewed every 12 months is what I like to see. The infrastructure plan for five to 15 years, reviewed every 12 months. A five to 15 wastewater treatment, uh, plant, plan and reviewed every 12 months. Finding a solution for the odors that everybody's complaining about at both places. Plan, plan of the ways to support the new development without adding taxes to our current residents. That's just like when I had to suck it up and pay the impact fees 10 years ago when, when, when that was, we were growing. Economy was good and, and something we needed. But anyway, uh, and saving on possible for the cities to consolidate some of the city and county services. We talked about that. I think that's an issue we need to look into to find out the, uh, uh, better safety, less taxes, and how to consolidate and how we're going to benefit out of it. I mean, there's got to be things that we're crossing over on, I mean, you know. So that needs to be one of the things. And plans for sidewalks and that we have around our neighborhood in our town. We, we need a little bit more sidewalks. I see spots that are not tied together and it's kind of unsafe for children to be getting from one point to the other. I recognize that. And anyway, uh, plan for more children's recreation. I have also, I think we need a dog park that would allow the dog to run off the leash. And, uh, and last, uh, at last, I have a nonpartisan committee to review partial, uh, and participate in the purchase and the use of the 5,000 acres that, that we have accomplished or had taken in. I think that, that, that need a committee itself just to, to kind of review things, keep our brand alive. That's what we got.
Wayne, I know you did some, a lot of good work with the Kick Ladder Center, Kick Ladder Foundation in Savannah. Tell us a little bit about that and then why you had such a passionate heart about giving back to that organization?
I don't, it's going to take too long to tell you how it becomes Santa Claus. At Christmas time, it was asked to give the 40 children and 60 adults in Savannah, uh, give out their presents. And, uh, when the adults really got to me, because I'd go to a house and they'd be four there. And Santa Claus would give them all, you know, presents. And I, and they'd be all jumping around, man, they want to open them, you know. These are peoples or adults that probably can't drive a car, but they could catch a bus and go to work, you know. So anyway, it would be a, uh, it, it would be a hat or shirt. And I'd ask them to, uh, you know, tell them to open the presents. And if you watch expressions on those, on those citizens, they, they would take that shirt and they would hold it to their chest. And, and I mean, they'd hug it. Then they would show it to the, to their, their buddy. I mean, it's a shirt. One would get a baseball cap and the emotions and how, and how, man, they'd run around the house. I mean, it was just, and I was thinking, you know, these, these people, it don't take months to just make, make their life. But anyway, I wind up just falling in love with an organization and start two years as president. But they got in a bad financial bind the year I took it over. And they've been around for 50 years and they got $400,000 cut from their budget and they were in trouble. They don't want to raise money, blah, blah, blah. So I come up with the idea of, you know, silent auctions. And anyway, the, the thing that was amazing, I'm from Brown County, Richmond Hill. And I started telling the people and my friends and their, and a lot of them were women too. Now, they stepped up and they said, you know, we need, we need to help you out with that, Wayne. I'm, you know, how many children? I said, oh, about 40, 45 little ones with autism, you know. And they said, well, just tell us what you want us to do. And I said, okay, I'm putting on a silent auction event, blah, 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 blah. Well, we had it at the Eddie Temple. And we, I put on about two of them when I was there. And a lot of people here will remember that. But the thing that was so funny about it is our people, the county folks and the Richmond Hill people, they never did brag about it. I mean, if something they'd done, they stepped up to the plate. But that, that one night, they raised $85,000. Okay, now, the Richmond Hill, Brown County people, they all got in their cars and they all said, Wayne wins Georgia, blah, blah, blah. And what I remember is they all leaving and it's Richmond Hill people and it's Brown County folks. You know, they come back to their home in Richmond Hill, they went to the county. But I'm telling you, the, the, looking at it now, it was the county and the city people. I mean, they had a great time. They joined up, they raised money for an organization that was in Savannah, Georgia. It didn't even, it wasn't even, it wasn't even our own, you know. And it's, it's a point to be made there that we can work together. I mean, there's no, there's no doubt, man. It, all you got to do is just tell them the story, you know, so. You know, I have a real, real passion for what happened those years of my life, with Kick Ladder Resource.
Your, your better half and your partner is Becky, and we love her. She's been around with, with you, supporting you in some of your decisions. And you guys formed a business not too long ago and just recently sold it. What was that called and tell us a little about, about that?
You know, that, that's kind of a, another story and I, I might start crying about that. But anyway, when, uh, uh, I built, uh, Jackson's Court when things were doing great. And what happened is the economy took a turn. And, you know, I'd gotten in trouble. So I had to come up with a, a, uh, an idea to survive through the, back through this hurricane. So I was sitting there one morning about six o'clock in the morning and I was just praying, man, what can I do? What kind of business I can get in that, uh, that the stock market interest rate, you know, all that don't affect it. I need a business that, that I can get into, you know, so I could stay afloat, you know. And, uh, anyway, it, it was, uh, uh, the thought come to me about, I had a flyer in a little basket in my machine that was, uh, on laser tag. And so I picked it up. Then I started thinking about children, you know, and I said, well, you know, children, we would spend money on, uh, on our kids. I said, you know, so I got thinking about that. And, and, and the thought come to me that it don't matter how bad the economy is or how bad the interest rates are. Parents will, will spend money on their kids. But you know, you're passionate about the children and they don't care what the stock market is doing. They don't care about the interest rate. They would jump up and I'm going to tell you, those kids, they would take care of them. They would have birthday parties and then if they can't afford a birthday party, grandma, grandpa will step up. So we went off in that direction and I, I went and talked to the bank and took about 45 days of running all over the place, learning how to run that center. The bank went along with the money, I got educated. I mean, that's how banks work, they say, we'll give you the money, you know. So he, that's how, uh, you know, the, the idea of jumping jacks come afloat. And it was, uh, and that's really, you know, helped, helped both of us survive through the hurricane, you know. And, uh, and it was, it was, it was true. I mean, I'd see people come in and, man, I don't care what, what kind of situation they're in. They're going to, they're going to give and they're going to, man, the little ones, man, they go, they will support the birthday parties. Now, I would tell you another story about working with the teenagers and the way I feel about that. And I think that, uh, it would have helped the city and the county to understand what I went through. Because I invested a million, $800,000 in jumping jacks. I have learned a lot about children and teenagers. So I, I would like to be able to share that with the city council one day, you know, because that's.
Tell us, Wayne, why we should, uh, elect you?
Sort of a, kind of the things I've been telling you, it's life experiences. I, I think you, there's, you can't go to school to get what I have been through. You know, I mean, you, you can have a business degree, you can come out of college and have a business degree. But if you ain't worked it and then been in the real world, it's, 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 it has no value. I have worked people with a business degree, you know. So, uh, I know that I don't have no college education, but I know that I have common sense. And I know I have skills to communicate with people. And I know I can listen to people. And, uh, I, I think that that's where I fill in on the, on the city council is being, bringing all that together. Because if you look at the council now, Russ Carpenter is a great guy. You know, if I, look here, if we were speaking at the function, he's the man. I mean, he can put it in. put it into words, you know. And Tara, now she can get in that room with the best of them. I mean, I'm not running a five K against her, you know, so she can get off of that. I heard that's what she wants to do, is challenge me to a relay race. And that ain't going to happen. I'll tell you that right now. I'm trying to get my knees replaced. And I have to order some new knees to handle her. So I decided not to, you know. But I, I think that I would share a whole lot of different stuff with the, with our county. And I mean, with our city. So I bring myself and, and all my experience.
Wayne, I want to thank you very much for coming out today and giving us your time. Ladies and gentlemen, Wayne Jackson, candidate for the open seat held by the legendary Johnny Murphy, a lion. We're sad that he's gone. March nineteenth is the election. Wayne Jackson, thank you for your time today. Thank you for your insight. And please go out and vote on March nineteenth. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Randy Boekuk here. I want to thank all of you for watching these interviews. I want to thank the candidates for coming out and giving us their time to tell who they are and what they're about. We have a special city here in Richmond Hill, and we can't really take it for granted. And we have to be careful on the persons or the people we put in charge of the city. We want to make sure that they're the best fit for our city. I hope these interviews will help you make a decision on who you think should hold that open seat for city council. Thank you for letting us come into your house, watch these interviews for the candidates, get out and vote on the nineteenth of March. And let's make sure that Richmond Hill is the great city that we have right now and will continue to be. Thank you.